I'll call the meeting of Lake House Unified School District's Regular Governing Board in July 9, 2018. We'll start with a moment of silent prayer and/or reflection. Carrie, if you'll call the roll.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
John Madison?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republik for which it stands, one nation under our honor, indivisible, with good reason and justice for all. Our first item this evening is item 1.5, which is call for budget carrying. Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board, the district must adopt a 2018-19 budget no later than July 15, 2018, and file the adopted budget with the Mojave County School Superintendent and the Superintendent of Public Instruction no later than July 18, 2018. The proposed budget summary was posted on the Arizona Department of Education website on June 27, 2018. In accordance with ARS 15-905, districts that maintain a website must provide a link on their website to ADE where the district's proposed budget summary can be viewed. Districts must also email the school finance budget team a clickable link to their webpage where the link to the proposed budget was placed. A copy of the email and a screenshot of the website will be retained in the file located in the district's business office. The full proposed and adopted budgets are kept on file at the district business office in the governing board minutes and are made available to the public upon request. The attached summary pages are provided as background for the budget hearing. That can be found later on in our action.
While we retain a motion on 1.5?
Make a motion that we approve the 2018-19 expenditure budget as presented.
Discussion? Want to back up and do that official way?
Oh, yes, I do. I will take my motion back and I will make a motion that we open our 2018-19 expenditure budget hearing.
You want to second that?
Yes, please.
Second. Now we're in here. Any comments from the public? Questions? Mr. Murray, anything?
Nothing has changed since the proposal.
Okay. Take the motion to close. Make a motion close. Carrie.
Pat Rooney?
Yeah.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Madison?
Yes.
Item 2, any calls to the public? Item 3 is recommendation of visitors. We have a bond update from Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's been a little while since we officially, yes, it is, since I've officially presented via PowerPoint. So I have several slides that I'd like to go through this evening, most of which are pictures, just to provide an update via visual. So you recall that the four areas of the bond were maintenance, technology, transportation, and athletics, and that still is the case through the 2017 first issuance. We still are projecting a 2020 second issuance for the next phase of the bond, and then 2023 will be phase three. So in phase one, so far expenditures to date, this was actually, it's probably about 30 days delayed, but out of the end of May, these are the expenditures as of May 30th, based on the voter pamphlet that went out to all voters within the area. This is page five of the voter pamphlet. We just added a column there, so there's a comparison as to what we've expended to date compared to what was listed in the bond pamphlet. So you can see the expenditures there. Total at the bottom is $6 million. Now, your column on the left is the total bond for the entire series, all phases, or all of the three issuances of the $49 million. This first issuance was $16.9 million, so we are currently at a little over $6 million. But that, we still have expenditures coming in almost daily, especially with the athletic field is beginning to wrap up. You'll see that for the board, the athletic improvement to athletic fields were right there within the advertised part of the budget as far as the $1.55 million for improvements. However, the remaining portion of the expenditures is up in the general category, which per bond council suggests that typically districts only have that top category. For the audience, it's right here. Our district decided to break out a separate line item, just to show the public that we are indeed committing dollars to athletic field improvements. But just by way of holding true to the pamphlet, we are putting our expenditures there, and any increases which we know that that occurred in this project will be under the construct, remodel, renovate, and approve school facilities, because that's indeed, that's what we are doing up there at the high school. We are improving facilities. So the remaining amount will be up here in that top column. So maintenance, this is just over the last several months, we've had several maintenance trucks and utility vans have arrived, and they are now being used by our maintenance staff. Have a scissor lift that has arrived that can be used throughout all of our indoor facilities. Flooring specs for our district facilities, we've received them, and we are now getting ready to move into the procurement phase. And we expect installations of our flooring to be completed throughout fiscal year 19 and possibly even beyond that, depending on the scope of the flooring installs that we commit to. Here are a couple of pictures of maintenance vehicles, a couple of the trucks that we received, and the scissor lift that we received. Transportation, over the last several months, we did receive the three buses that we purchased earlier this last fiscal year. The truck for a van, primarily it's used for a van as a tow vehicle, but transportation will also use it as they need to pick up parts and use it as a tow vehicle periodically as well. You'll see that here are a couple of the buses, and then there's our heavy-duty F-350 truck that will primarily tow the van trailer, as you see pictured there. By way of technology, Infinite Visions is the HR and financial software system that we are now migrating towards. We go live this month. First payroll processes here in just another week or so, so that everyone has their fingers crossed on that. We have transitioned over to have that software system pretty much full of the data we need, and we are slowly going to migrate away from our current IFA system. Computers, peripheral software, data storage, that's kind of an ongoing thing, as we have pretty much used all of the bond dollars that were allocated for the first phase in some major infrastructure that went on over the last year. But there are still some trickling purchases that are coming in for much smaller items at this time. The athletic facilities, Lee Barn Stadium, currently we're in the construction phase, as everyone can see who drives by the facility. Estimated completion time is the beginning of August. And so this is the slideshow part of it, where I've put several pictures on there. We have some aerial photos, drone photos from before the project started, just before. And then I have some on-the-ground photos of the construction in progress. And then at the end, we'll see some drone footage of what the field looks like as of the end of last month in June. So this is where we started. You can see the aerial view of the football facility. At the top here, this is where the practice facility is now located, and retention area. And then our baseball fields, which this area down here will be all of Phase Two. So for the audience, this area down in here, a small portion of this softball field, this area down in here will be Phase Two, which is going to be addressed in the second issuance in 2020. We have more drone footage, so you can see, will definitely be a compare and contrast here in just a few minutes. It's interesting to see that our players were using this field just several weeks before these photos were taken. So that was what our football team and soccer teams used for quite some time.
Since 1971.
Since 1971.
That was when you were at the sport.
Yeah.
So all of this area from this lower point in the parking lot area, all the way down and beyond in this now practice field area, and back up here to Palaverdy, that is all of Phase One, that is going to be completed in August. You'll recall this area down below, which is harder to see on this photo, but this area down below was originally going to be part of Phase Two, but because of some drainage and retention issues and concerns in regards to flooding, we had to incorporate this into Phase One of the project so that we can address any type of flooding concerns that may happen with our monsoon seasons and other rainy seasons. So again, for the audience, this area back in here was originally going to be part of Phase Two, so the cutoff line was going to be right here. This was Phase One, and this was Phase Two, but we had to incorporate this area here, which is now going to be a practice facility, as part of Phase One. So pretty much two-thirds of that area has been kind of brought to pass or brought to development in Phase One versus about 50% of it is originally planned. So here are some on-the-ground photos of the renovations in progress. This was right there in February. Mr. Becker and Mr. Krieger was, I think we've had many, many memories of this, and it didn't seem like too long ago that we were on the field watching this very crane take down lightpole after lightpole. And that was the very first part of the renovations and demolition part of the project. You can see here, same day, equipment mobilizing and becoming, going into place, getting ready to begin demolition. One of the many buildings that were there on site for many, many years. And demolition is beginning at this point. You can see some of the bleachers, the grandstands coming down at that point. They took it out piece by piece. This is a view from what the parking lot used to be, and will eventually be repoured in that area, looking down towards where the new concession stand will be located, which will be in that area here. This is a retaining wall going into place on the visitor's side of the field, so we had to pour a lot of concrete to make sure that the facilities were sound. A lot of footings went in to this project, a lot of concrete, a lot of things that you will not see once the project is completed, will be either behind or underneath the ground or behind the grandstands. This is a view from the, kind of where the scoreboard used to be, looking down towards where it will now be a practice facility. Retaining, not retaining wall, but it will actually, a retaining wall going into place right there in front of the grandstands. The grandstands are going to be built back here, and that's where they are currently. So you can see that all of this was then refilled with dirt, and this concrete wall having to retain the weight of that dirt and eventually slab this forward here where the new bleachers, grandstands will and are currently located. Here's one of the many footings that support a lot of these structures and retain dirt. This is the wall that curves down towards the concession stand, which would be down here in the distance. Parking lot is over here to the left, so this is the main approach and walkway down into the stadium. So for the audience, it goes this way, concession stands are down here, so this is walk down and approach the concession stand ticket. Another view at the track, and seeing the retaining wall there to your right, and the grandstands would be up above that. Opposite view, track view, field is on your right, grandstands would be on your left, up where that track is located, up above. This was a decision we made as part of this project. This is where the grandstands are now erected. Underneath, it's all solid concrete. We elected to do that as part of the project because of the fact that we can use this as storage. Underneath the grandstands, it will be completely fenced off and secure. So rather than having equipment resting on the dirt, it'll store much better on a nice, clean, solid surface versus just laying around on a dirt surface with rocks and whatnot to protrude mats and other things that store them here. Track view again, to the right is the field. It's one of the many trenches there for drainage, for both field and track drainage right there. Pipes are now currently in that trench. This is a view looking towards the grandstand, so if your back would be towards Palaverdy, the concession stand is there on your left, the main entrance to the stadium is there on the right, that's the curved wall that I pointed to just a little while ago, and the bleachers would be in the distance there on the right-hand side. This is looking from the back of the grandstands towards the concession stand. So you see now the wrought iron is in place along that wall, and concrete is being prepped, and the forms are set for putting concrete down to allow for people to get back and forth with that and to walk across dirt and gravel. Grandstands are going into place here, as you can see. You can see the turf in the background, the green is in place. You see it again there, the turf is in place, and more concrete and grandstand building at that particular time. See grandstands going into place, a lot of the concrete walkways and curbing and fencing going up in these photos here. And again, grandstands, press boxes in place. You can see the light fixtures, the light towers in the back. You'll recall in the first few slides, those light poles were actually on the field, behind the sidelines, but they were on the grass surface, which is a hazard, to say the least. Now the light poles are well off the field and behind the bleachers and grandstands area. View from the track, again, looking towards the grandstands, you can see the field. And now here's where we are as of June. You can see down here at the bottom, the retention pond area slash practice field. That is here in place, so all of your drainage from up here is either in retention pond areas that are strategically placed around certain parts of the field, or that are actually carried down via pipes down here to a drain that would actually spill over into that practice facility should we have enough water accumulate and need to be diverted somewhere. You can see that the asphalt track is in place, that's the base layer. In the weeks to come, they'll be installing the rubberized all-weather surface track. Everywhere that you see now that is black will become a reddish color rubberized surface, including here behind the end zones, that'll be set up for some track and field events, high jump, long jump, those types of things. You can see landscaping going into place here. Landscaping will continue on around the entire facility. This area to the right, down at the bottom area, will be the new, newly designed parking lot area. They have since, since this photo, have cleared things out and have begun to prep it, and in the weeks to come, they're going to be paving that facility as the project comes closer to an end. Couple more aerial photos here in conclusion.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say that out loud.
It's photoshopped. No, it's a nice, nice facility. Again, Phase Two will be this area down below, and addressing the baseball area. Once all the landscaping is in place, things will clean up nicely. So that's where we have been and where we're moving to, in that side-by-side comparison of what our students used to play on and what they will play with in the future. Seating capacity is much greater for graduation and other events. It's just all in all, a nice facility with trying to, again, go back, I've had several comments and conversations to people and with people regarding the intent. When we started this project, we knew that there was a little bit of a disconnect, to say the least, between what was originally thought of as being the total price of this project and what reality would be. And I believe as we went to the board and had a conversation with you, I think we're all in agreement that we were trying to fulfill this project based on the intent and based on conversations with people. Regardless of the shortfall of the budget money, we're able to make that up in other areas. Thankfully, the SFP has been very generous with funding projects that otherwise would have been bond projects. So we're slowly starting to make up that difference. But we are making that up, and I believe that we have held true to what was promised or implied that we do to the overall public by that picture you see on the right. And it's still not completed yet, but it will be here shortly. That's all right.
Comments? If there's questions. Questions, comments? No questions?
What's the capacity as far as seating?
I believe the last, I think it was 2,500 for the grandstands and 500 for the visitor's side. Which you can see right there, that's the visitor, those are the visitor bleachers right there on the old picture. So that little strip, those were the bleachers for the visitors. And then you can see the comparison there between what is and what used to be. Everything is ADA compliant. There were no handrails here, walking up and down those bleachers, whereas on the new grandstands, there's handrails within all the aisles and safety barriers, so it's very well done, the way it should be.
So when graduation comes around next year, is there going to be any restrictions on stiletto heels on the field?
We've had that, we've actually had that conversation, and had those questions ourselves, but according to the manufacturer, they don't have concerns with that. They said it's more than durable to withstand.
Pretty easy, says something different.
No, he's right.
There's about, there's about three inches of infill within the grass there, within the synthetic. Is it ideal or no?
There's a difference between being allowed to wear stiletto heels and calling stiletto heels a good idea.
Right, I just didn't know if there was a problem with that.
There was a, I think their ramp included, we need to talk about the track itself to protect the track, that's supposed to be part of the whole package, we said that coming in.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll have a map that will go across the track area itself to allow traffic to go to in front of the field. But obviously, this is all due to all of us, so we will, as Mr. Becker and Mr. Krieger have a need for certain things because they see that there's just something that we need to protect, and we need to have those conversations to make this last as long as we can.
So I think we can entertain that question a lot better if we have a warranty meeting with the actual company that we have to sit through to make sure we do not remove warranty, which then we can answer those questions a lot better in the future, once we can do that. We could ask them to schedule that where the officers are on vacation, the coaches that utilize it are included in that meeting and such, so that everybody's on the same page as well.
I think we should say, "Wear sensible shoes, graduated this year."
I haven't seen two of these stilettos lately. Normally, they would wear those elevated shoes, and I don't know how many I've seen fall in graduation right in front of me. So, you know, the administration can put restrictions on cookware.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Murray and the staff and systems for having some schools. You know, we wouldn't be anywhere near this without our community and the bond, the people who worked on that bond, the ideas, the thought process that went into it, and then Mr. Murray and his department's financial management, and thank you for that. If we're going to have a facility, we can absolutely be proud of because of that. Anything further? The Lake House Education Association sent me a message on Facebook and said, "We're all out of town," so they're not here this evening.
Item 4.1 is approval of the consent agenda. I'll retain a motion on that.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yeah.
John Madison?
Yes.
Item 5.1 is the second presentation and review of revised policies. This is a silent.
Mrs. Sanders.
Thank you. Mr. Mastin, members of the board, these are the policies that were brought to the board at the last meeting. There have been no changes. Again, these are technical revisions to various policies that are updated, we are hearing changes in legislation and so forth.
I'll entertain a motion on 5.1.
I make a motion we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on 5.1? Terry Matt, Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 5.2 is the second presentation and review of policies, GCCA, this is the table.
Mr. Mastin, in governing board, it is recommended that the board approve the second presentation of revised policies, GCCA professional support staff sick leave, GCCBR professional support staff personal emergency religious leave, and GDDR support staff vacations and holidays. There's been no changes. We are just moving to give days upfront rather than to give them out each month.
I'll entertain a motion on 5.2.
I make a motion we approve 5.2 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Terry Matt and Terry, if you'll call it.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 6.1 is approval of expenditure of insurance proceeds for fiscal year 2018-2019. Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the expenditure of insurance proceeds during the fiscal year 2018-19. According to Arizona Vice Statute 15-1103, this action is required to expend insurance proceeds which the district may receive in connection with insurance recoveries. At this time, we do not know what those losses or recoveries may be, however, this action prepares the district for events that may occur.
I'll entertain a motion on 6.1.
I make a motion we approve 6.1.
Second.
Any discussion on 6.1?
Do we happen to know what the proceeds were for last year? I know we don't have this year.
I ran that report just prior to this meeting. We're a little over $30,000 that came in, and that was primarily because of the, we had that power outage that you'll recall earlier on at the high school, and we went through our insurance to help us to recover those losses.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
The power outage was related to AC units, not just the power outage. The AC units were damaged, a few of them.
And smoked those computers, is that what you called it? Or some other issues, you remember that?
Terry, if you'll call it, please.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 6.2 is approval of disposition of litigation proceeds for fiscal year 2019.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the disposition of litigation proceeds during the fiscal year 2018-2019. According to ARS 15-1107, this action is required to expend litigation recovery proceeds which the district may receive in connection to litigation recoveries. At this time, we do not know what the recoveries may be, however, this action prepares the district for events that may occur.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on 6.2.
I make a motion we approve 6.2 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on 6.2?
Same question.
Approximately $12,000.
All right. Terry?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 6.3 is approval to adopt the expenditure budget for 2018-19. Mr. Murray. Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the adoption of the total budget for the fiscal year 2018-19 in the amount of $62,686,885. For ARS 15-905, the governing board must adopt and send a copy of the adopted budget to the county school superintendent no later than July 18, 2018. The total aggregate school district budget limit cannot be exceeded unless through a revision. The $39,526,996 budget limit is for maintenance and operations, classroom site, and district additional assistance categories. And the total $62 million figure is also outlined in the summary that you have in your packet.
All right, I will entertain a motion on 6.3.
I make a motion we approve 6.3 as presented.
Second.
Discussion on 6.3?
We had that discussion last week. We could, we have it, but I don't know if anybody would want to spend the two hours to do that.
Right. Any comments or questions from the audience on 6.3?
No, but I'll make a comment. I appreciate how thorough you are in explaining your budget. You make sure that everybody understood it at our last meeting, and I appreciate that even for the layperson who thinks it's like a business budget and it's not, so it's very much appreciated, so thank you.
All right. Terry, let's spend $62 million.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 6.4 is approval of governing board and administration travel. Superintendent aside.
Yes. I apologize, there are a couple of things that I missed in this packet, and I believe your name is John, not James.
My oldest son is.
Yes, thank you.
We can send him.
Sure. Thank you. President Mastin, members of the board, we are recommending that the governing approve that John Mastin, board president, Kathy Cox, board member, Diana Cyrus, superintendent, Aggie Walter, director of special services, and Jamie Festerdegel, director of personnel technology, travel to the Arizona School Boards Association Annual Law Conference on September 5 through 7, 2018, in Scottsdale, Arizona. This particular ASB law conference, ASBA law conference, will include some full day and half-day sessions, but a major focus of the conference this year is going to be on school safety. The pre-conference has a full day on school safety, and several of the sessions throughout the conference are going to be focused on school safety with the most up-to-date information, we're hoping. On the pre-conference, there's also going to be a half-day session on the, what's being referred to as the privatization agenda, which are the ESAs, those kinds of actions that have been taken that allow for privates and others to gain more money. And then, the main conference, of course, focuses on the areas of the law that particularly affect special education, personnel, technology, and board function initiatives, and so it is recommended that the board approve that. We have indicated here what the maximum amount would be for the cost of this conference.
All right, I will entertain a motion on 6.4.
I make a motion we approve 6.4 as presented.
I second.
Discussion?
I almost didn't go, but when I saw that school safety was the hot button and the way that it was laid out in their, in their pre-conference materials, I thought it was very important for our district, and I agree. So.
Maybe we could provide a disc for the board members that don't go, or the administrators that don't go, because I just look at the disc information, so, but if we have leadership that's not going, it'd be good if they had that disc.
And we can provide the password to the website for all of the presentations and access information, hopefully.
Any other questions or discussion? Terry.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 6.5 is approval of renewal of quality first childcare scholarships provider agreement between Valley of the Sun United Way and Lake Havasus Unified School District for Little Knights and Smoke Tree Preschools. Mrs. Walter.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the quality first childcare scholarship provider agreement between Valley of the Sun United Way and Lake Havasus Unified Little Knights and Smoke Tree Developmental Preschools. The First Things First preschool scholarship program provides access to quality preschool programs to eligible low-income families. This program requires annually renewal by Lake Havasus Unified School District and Board. Valley of the Sun United Way is the direct recipient of the First Things First funding. The annual preschool scholarships are awarded by Quality First First Things First through United Way participating eligible programs. This agreement will be in effect pending final approval from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, with consecutive yearly renewal options pending quality first star rating and eligibility of First Things First funding. This agreement has been reviewed by legal. Earlier, you'll recall that we did share that our Smoke Tree program went from a three-star to a four. We got notification that our Little Knights went from a four-star to a five-star, which is one of the highest ratings. We're very proud of the hard work that they do.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on 6.5.
Summate.
Second. Discussion on 6.5. I think it's cool that I rated on both of them.
Well, we're glad you made that happen.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Terry, no discussion? Terry?
I'm sorry, can I make a quick comment?
You may.
Since I was going to make the comment at the end, but it came up now, I always went ahead and printed out the ones in our area, and so when you actually have parents look up the list of preschools, the Little Knights is the only preschool listed as the highest quality, Smoke Tree is a quality plus, and then the New Day is a quality.
Yes. Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 6.6, approval of changes to extracurricular/cor curricular enrichment activities for tax credit funds. Mr. Murray, again, I know Mrs. Heller is out of town, so he'll take this.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the addition of the Jamaica Homework Club to the tax credit program at Jamaica Elementary School. Ms. Heller, principal at Jamaica Elementary School, is requesting the addition of the Jamaica Homework Club to the tax credit program. Purpose of the program is a before-and-after school program serving students in grades first through sixth. Homework club provides a quiet, structured environment for students to complete their homework with the help of highly qualified instructors, aides, and mentors. Homework club staff provides help and support in all school subjects. Homework club strives to instill good work habits, organization skills, time management abilities, and a sense of accomplishment in every student. Program sponsor will be Lee Light, and upon closure of the program, funds will be transferred to the tax credit, all no preference account.
I will entertain a motion on 6.6.
I make a motion we approve 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Discussion on 6.6? Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 6.7, approval of changes to extracurricular/cor curricular enrichment activities for tax credit funds. This one is for Havasupide. Mr. Murray and Mr. Sanders.
I will, I will make the motion because I have two boys that want to Havasupide, that we approve 6.7 as presented.
I second.
Mr. Murray? Do you want me to present?
Sure.
I'll put it on the floor.
Turn it backwards.
I thought we both got out of it.
Can't close.
It is, Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the addition of the after-school homework club to the tax credit program at Havasupide Elementary School. Mr. Sanders, principal at Havasupide Elementary School, is requesting the addition of the club. The purpose of the club is to supply homework support to every student enrolled at Havasupide Elementary. Certified and classified staff will monitor, support, and answer any questions asked dealing with students' homework, thus helping them with getting homework finished correctly and turned in. This program also supports students with academic skills reinforcement in our computer lab for students that have been verified to have their homework completed by one of the club's sponsors. The program sponsors will be Claude Sanders and Kelly Wolf, and upon closure of the program, funds will be transferred to the tax credit, all no preference account.
All right. Put it on the floor already, so any questions? You're not going to put Mr. Sanders on the spot?
Well, let me think of one.
Yeah, I have a question. Why didn't, why weren't all three of these presented at the same time? Why are we doing these separately?
In my mind, I think that we do them separately because each one is an independent program and an independent school.
And they're required to fill out separately.
And there's, there's forms and a procedure for each one that we bring on board.
Also, each of them are slightly different in how they're run and how they're set up, so the priorities and the functions are slightly different, even though they're all homework clubs.
And we already have a homework club, Pat. We spend every bit of our gifts and donations from K-12, and that's how I support it. And the other schools haven't had that ability to do that, so they're creating one. I'm trying to get mine funded, because we deal with 140, 260 kids a day with it.
I just wondered that, because they're all homework clubs, why it wasn't, even though they may have different philosophies, why the presentation wasn't one thing rather than three different things?
You're actually forming three different financial entities within our bookkeeping system to handle it, is part of it as well. If we did it, if we did one and done, or we presented together, it might get a little bit confusing on the bookkeeping end.
Would it be confusing, Mr. Murray?
Well, it'd be a lot easier to pull out this action agenda item and then file it as saying that this club has been officially adopted by the board for Havasupide Elementary. So from a, from a record-keeping and retention aspect, it'd be easier to have it individually, but from having to speak over and over and over again, it would be easier to have them all in one.
Okay, you've contested.
I'll say it three times. Mr. Murray, you say it three times.
Anything else on 6.7? Terry?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Item 6.8, I don't have to read the whole thing, I'll just say it is going to be Ora Grande's turn. Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the addition of the Ora Grande Homework Club to the tax credit program at Ora Grande Elementary School. The purpose of the program is for students who face challenges and completing their homework in a timely manner, need additional assistance with assignments, and may forget to do their homework assignments, and for those who tend to turn in homework after the due date, or who may turn in the assignments without completing the work. Program sponsor will be Carol Noakowski, and upon closure of the program, funds will be transferred to the tax credit, all no preference account.
I'll entertain a motion on 6.8.
I make a motion we approve 6.8 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on 6.8?
I just have a question. Will the first graders be eligible from the Magnet School to participate in that because they're in? Okay.
Okay, Terry.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 6.9 is discussion.
I'm sorry, could I go back and clarify my answer? To the extent that any first grader would be served in homework.
Sure, of course. Absolutely.
That's okay. Item 6.9, discussion of possible first presentation slash review of revisions to policy KCD and KCDEA, public gifts and donations to schools. Superintendent aside.
Thank you, Mr. Mastin, members of the board. The governing board requested that we revisit our crowdsourcing policy, and so we have brought it back for this meeting. This was originally approved in October of 2016, and it was a policy addition as well as two attachments. So I would like to share that on the KCD policy, the statement about crowdsourcing was added about halfway down of page one, defining what crowdsourcing was. The remaining part of the policy on gifts and donations had stayed the same. Then we added on the following pages, the KCDEA, which was a definition of what crowdsourcing was and the procedures, and then finally, there is a form that was added on KCDEB. So this was an opportunity for the board to discuss this policy, have an opportunity if you'd like to recommend any changes, and have a discussion in general about crowdsourcing based on the policy being. based on the policy being on the agenda.
I'd like to move that we open item 6.9 for discussion and possible action.
Second.
Okay, we're on the floor.
So my concern comes from, well, from a few different areas. First and foremost, there's this constant, our teachers don't have the supplies that they need drum constantly going off in our community. And I forgot to bring my lists that I just picked up from Staples that gives the list of all the supplies that the kids need to start, and then the ads out of ads pay that are asking for donations, and now we're crowdsourcing. So I have a concern with this funding mechanism just because of that, because it seems like it's never enough. I understand that there may be a need for it, but then when we talk about the technology, my concern is that it's almost circumventing the board by, because the technology tends to bring in a curriculum. It doesn't matter what they're using it for, it's going to bring in a curriculum, but that's not coming before the board. So it seems to me it's, I have a couple of concerns with it. First and foremost is what curriculum are they getting on tablets? And I see now that it would be approved by the superintendent and the principal, which I appreciate that that's on the form. But it still begs the question, what curriculum are they then using on this? Or what sites are they going to be able to go to if it's not just a reader? And then also the perception of our teachers not having the supplies that they need. That's a big concern for me because I thought that we were providing the supplies that our teachers needed, and I thought we had some sponsors that were providing those supplies, but that's not the messaging that is landing in our community. So it's not really a question, but those are my concerns.
Well, and I've had some concerns as well. I mean, I see a lot of this out on social media, I see a lot of it at the different crowdsourcing sites, and we're asking for Chromebooks, we're asking for things that weren't voter-approved. In the bond that we got, we're also asking for things that the voters absolutely rejected two years prior to our successful bond process. And so I kind of wonder if we need something, why there isn't an approval process to go out and get it. I haven't seen that. I've just seen that people are out asking for things, and it's not, you know, a remo paper, it's not, you know, pencils or pens, it's not normal schoolroom supplies, it's heavy equipment. I think I've seen microscopes out there, I've seen big things, big ticket items in the grand scheme of things, and it causes me a little bit of concern too that we're out in a community where we've done a bond and override, and we've said, we need these things, and again, we go out and we take the public's money to go purchase those, and then we go back out to that well and we say, hey folks, by the way, we got the bond, we got the override, thank you very much, now we need Chromebooks, or iPads, or Kindle readers, or microscopes, or some of these big ticket items, and nothing comes through this body as far as, you know, extra resource materials or change in curriculum, those types of things in that process. That's, that's a concern. There should be a process for how we bring in things within our district.
Well, I think there is, in the gifts and donations, that's where we get them.
There is, and we do look pretty carefully at anything that's requested for technology. It's not something that we're already using. I would, I would say a couple of things. One of, staff have been getting donations for a very long time before it became crowdsourcing, and so what's happening for the crowdsourcing is it's very public, the things that are being requested, first of all, but we also had it happening without a process, which is why it was added to the gifts and donations back in 2016, because there was absolutely no process for approving it. People would just go out on a website and request different stuff. So that's part of it. The other thing that happens, and in a couple of things, for the past several years, there really has been no money for extra things, and so the basics, the paper and the pencils and so forth, but if you wanted to replace a set of microscopes in a lab, there really wasn't funding to say, buy a new set of microscopes. That would have been out of DAA money or whatever. And we have had community organizations step up. So for example, this year, I mentioned it last meeting, that the Rotary gave $10,000 to the science department just for that purpose, so they don't have to be out seeking those. And part of why we wanted to keep the district additional assistance aside so we could begin to purchase some of these items. And looking at, thinking about the ad, we do have our normal school supply list, which last year we spent a lot of time looking at and trying to winnow that down into the kinds of things that teachers would ask for students to bring. But we also have the Realtors Association, which comes to us and asks us to provide them with supply list, and those are for the things that, that maybe they wouldn't get. So I use last year as the example, a lot of our teachers wanted electronic pencil sharpeners so the kids could just go through quickly and sharpen their pencils, and little things like that, things that they wouldn't normally get out of the supply list. And so I know the Realtors Association put that in. I don't think the wording on the ad isn't what I would have selected, but that was something that they do as an annual drive, and they advertise it as for school supplies. The other thing that happens is that it's particularly true at the elementary schools where we have four of our schools that are Title I funded and two they're not. And so our title schools do have some opportunity to purchase things through their title funds, such as additional Kindles for our reading program or things like that, that our other schools don't necessarily have the discretionary, it's not really discretionary, but have additional funds to do that. And so they sometimes will seek other funding sources for those materials that they don't have extra money to purchase, because we haven't been able to give them a general budget with which to purchase those kinds of equipment and supplies. By, by having these come through the crowdsourcing, I will say that there have been requests that have been denied. So for example, requests for teachers pay teacher curriculum, and that was denied because that's a curriculum that's not something that we have approved. Now, that doesn't mean teachers don't go out and buy things from them, but at least through this process, they aren't putting up a crowdsourcing for it. I just recently saw one that was requesting some supplies for kindergarten. And in looking to see the detail of that, there are some things that we don't necessarily carry in our warehouse, or typically even order through our warehouse. So there is a discussion about whether is that an appropriate thing to go for crowdsourcing, or is that something we look at, you know, should we provide a funding source for those things if they're necessary for kindergarten? So those are the discussions we're beginning to have now that we actually have a potential funding source for those items.
Well, I think, I think what causes the myths and distress is, is here is one, and I don't know if this went through the system or not, but this is on Donors Choose. Team table learning. My students need six activity tables to fit a large group without having to put multiple tables together that will move around and migrate around my classroom. Another, my students need magnets and motion kit, and snap circuit sets and a 3D solar system model, and other hands-on science materials to actively engage in meaningful lessons. This person needs flexible seating options for their classroom, involved chairs, to offer a great alternative seating in a chair, enter the floor and provide some wiggle room. And they actually put that one up twice, they're actually running two campaigns side by side. And these are, these are active district campaigns on Donors Choose right now, coming, coming from teachers. I don't know that these have gone through any formal process in the district, but I see these things up on Donors Choose. We're not necessarily talking about student supplies as a whole either, we're talking about teacher supplies.
A lot of them are things they want, not something they need.
Correct, correct. And, and a lot of the examples that you used were things that you have a community group coming to the district and saying, we have spendable money, we want to help you, how would you apply it? As opposed to somebody going to the community and saying, please give us money. There's, there's an entirely different thought process between those two things. And, and so if we are going to go to our community for money, we need to know what we're asking for, and frankly, it's not just a teacher in a classroom. Somebody goes to the community, I feel they're representing Lake Havas Unified School District in the ask, and, you know, are they representing that this is something extra, or this is something absolutely necessary that the district simply is not providing? A lot of the time, especially when it gets to the point of social media, I have the impression in reading it that it's something that the district has failed to provide a classroom, or that the district is unwilling to fund to a classroom. I think there needs to be an internal process and a discussion point before we go out to our public and say, hey folks, we could really use this. And, and we need to clarify, is this a want or is it a need? I know, I know for a fact that I've run into classrooms in, in my comings and goings with students in the district, one of them needed fans. We readily went out and bought four floor fans for a classroom without hesitation. And not that somebody said that it was an absolute need because we had an air conditioning issue at the time, but we, we walked in, the classroom was warm, and we thought that they could use fans, and we offered. Nobody, nobody approached us to do that. I don't know that I would be of the same mindset if somebody walked up to me and said, and said, you know, why do I think that my kids are hot and I need a fan? I don't know that I would say, say no or yes in that situation, but, you know, I think we've got a very generous and giving community, and I think the fear that I have is that we shouldn't be taking advantage of our community in, in the way that I, I think that we might be perceived to have, have done here in recent memory with the advent of crowdsourcing.
Well, I'd like to look at it from a little different angle, and that is, it seems to me that if principals or the superintendent need to approve the acquisition of something that comes through crowdsourcing, that that would take care of a lot of the concerns expressed here tonight. I've always been concerned about inventory, and I've, I've brought this up with you before, do we have a module at the schools when we get new equipment that when a teacher leaves the district or checks out, that someone makes sure that all of those things that the teacher acquired stays with the school district? And you had told me the last time I brought this up at a school board meeting that, no, we don't have that yet, that you're working on it, that it's another expense, but do you recall this conversation?
We don't have, at the time, we didn't have a warehouse component.
Okay.
Technology of being able to adequately show an inventory and quantity on hand, but we, now with moving to VISIONs, we will have that in place.
Okay.
Now, as far as inventory, location of fixed assets, we've always had a paper trail of that, but now with, with our system that we're putting in place, we should have something electronic.
Okay.
To be able to track an, an exact location of a certain item.
Because I had worked to have that at the high school when we got a new computer system, software system there for all kinds of things, and it seemed that the inventory system kind of failed when something was assigned to a teacher's classroom and the teacher checked out. It wasn't necessarily, the procedure wasn't followed, it was that the system didn't quite work as we had hoped. So I'm hoping if this would, this would work seamlessly if we could have that, whatever that module is, certainly at the high school and at the elementary schools as well. Otherwise, we can pass something tonight, and there's not going to be any way at the elementary level, if a teacher leaves the district, that, that item is going to necessarily remain at the school because, anyway. And that's what I, I would like to do, is look at it from that approach.
The current process now is anything that comes via crowdsourcing is sent to the, to the school, but then the procedure is that that's sent back to the warehouse. If it comes, yes, or whatever, goes to the school, and then internally that shipped back to the warehouse where it's actually received, tagged, and then reset back to the actual school.
So I'm talking about after it goes to the school, and it goes into the teacher's classroom. And in September, that teacher is, was a third grade teacher, and all of a sudden she's being asked to do second grade, and what she had ordered from crowdsourcing was a third grade item, and that's still in that third grade classroom, and it doesn't get used, and then some other teacher spots it, and then, yeah, you sure you could have, I knew this happened so often, that kind of situation. I'm, I'm looking at it. When, when that happens, it needs to be accounted for, especially when a teacher retires or moves out of the district. That's what I'm interested in, and that's, to me, that says computers, not paper trail.
Well, this, this, this policy kind of specifies that, that it, that's a requirement, the transfer disposal of assets in this new crowdsourcing fundraising policy, so it looks like there's.
So we do have that computer capability.
There's, there's a general fixed asset module.
At the school level.
In VISIONs.
At the school level.
Approved by the principal.
Everyone, there's what they call a DAC, it's an, each individual site, principals, administrative assistants at each site will be able to log in and access VISIONs from their school sites.
So we do have that now.
We will have tracking capabilities.
Okay.
Obviously, with a new system, we're going to have to fine tune that and make sure that it's, it's running, you know, at optimal performance, really make sure that everybody is keeping track of it. Those who go out yearly, sometimes semi-annually, those who go out and actually do inventory also need the help and assistance of those who are on site, because those who are taking a product from point A to point B and not telling anyone, because there currently are forms that are to be filled out to transfer, transfer a piece of equipment from one room to, to another. If a teacher moves from room 101 and goes to 102, technically, that form should still be filled out.
But I know how that paper system works. The only way is to have it on a computerized system where things are assigned to a teacher.
Well, it will, it does get transferred into the computer currently.
Okay, as long as it's something.
The problem is, is getting it from paper to the computer. So if a teacher just takes it from 101 and moves to 102, and that doesn't get caught for six months to a year, then, then we have a fixed asset problem of moving from one occasion to the other.
I know all about that.
We're trying, we're trying to.
That's what I'm trying to overcome.
Well, we're, we're trying to move more of the VISIONs to do that.
Human beings are a tougher animal.
I do know, even at the end of this past school year, we had a teacher who had received some items through crowdsourcing who was changing schools, and the discussion arose on does the, does that crowdsourcing item stay with the school because people were donating for that item for that school, or does it go with the teacher who would use it in that classroom?
Right.
Who sought the funds to purchase that item. So that is a further clarification that we're planning to have a discussion about.
But I wouldn't want this policy to prohibit that from happening because if it remains at that school and no one wants to use it, that, that's.
It is all contextual.
Yeah, it is, very definitely.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the next step is for this policy. I can say that as far as the, the review of it, if it's typically, if it's not something that is going to result in an additional curriculum, so for example, if it was the kits to do some additional things in science that we wouldn't normally fund as part of the core material, those are things that we would have approved, but if, what I'm hearing from the board is you would like some stricter parameters on, or possibly with some stricter parameters on what is approved, and.
We don't want to be control freaks, we want to make sure our classrooms are fun, are set up appropriately, but we also don't want, I don't think we want the constant beg.
Can I say something about crowdsourcing? I think the reality is, it's really not the community a lot of the time that's funding crowdsourcing. What's happening is, it's put out there, and I know come Fiesta Bowl time, the Fiesta Bowl goes and funds every single crowdsourcing out there. So a lot of the time, they're put out there at specific times, and GoFundMe matches what you put in there. So what you'll see is teachers will fund one another's, knowing that it will be matched by GoFundMe, or matched by the Fiesta Bowl, or matched by Farmers Insurance, and so a lot of times, it's not necessarily the, this community. a lot of times, it's not necessarily this community.
I understand that, but these are the same ones that we see that are being dropped into Facebook, and this teacher needs this, or, you know, not to pick on Only Orchids, but Only Orchids will see something and rally around a cause, and put that up on the social media, and I don't want a perception in our community that says, "Hey, we just gave them all this money, why are they out begging for this?" And there are people out there that'll latch on to that and push that. I don't necessarily think that there's anything wrong with crowdsourcing something, don't misunderstand what the intent is here, but I think we're bringing goods into our district, and we need to have some idea of what's coming in, what the intended purpose is, and when we start getting into, you know, a $20 science kit, okay, but when we start getting into a $200, $300, $400, $500 item, especially when we start talking about Chromebooks and iPads and that level of thing, is this not now district property? I mean, I even have the same questions myself. Carol Noakowski, in her classroom, has need of laptops. She has a community program that I was happy to help with, that is getting laptops into Orang Rondé. You know, donate your used laptop, they bring it to my shop, we refurbish it, get it ready to go, and into a classroom it goes, but is that now district property, or is that Carol Noakowski's property? And if I drop it off at Carol's classroom, which is the procedure, how does that then get inventory into the district books?
My concern is administrative oversight. In other words, I think that pretty well covers this, that all of a sudden, you have people that are freelancing, doing this and that, and you don't have administrative oversight, whether it's at the district level, at the school level, and those type of things concern me, because, you know, all of a sudden, it's a good idea, but then it goes haywire, and so that's a concern of mine.
I just say, this document was drafted, actually, I think even a little before this date at the bottom, because of administrators, and we had this conversation on a couple of occasion at elementary principals' meetings, that there were several of us as administrators who were questioning why certain things were showing up at our school sites without us even knowing about it. All of a sudden, UPS would come in, and there's three boxes there going somewhere, and we just needed to be in the loop. It wasn't that we were discouraging it, it was just that we needed to know it was coming and have these conversations ahead of time, so that's why this simple form was drafted, just so there was a protocol of staff pitching their idea, their need to the principal, which would then go to the superintendent for ultimately either approval or denial. Because of that very reason, I personally, and I happened to be a couple of times, I'd come out of my office, and, "Where did these come from?"
The thing that concerned me was this scenario over on page two of two, where it says, "The teacher solicits funds from a crowdsourcing website, and the funds are then electronically deposited to his or her personal bank account. The monetary donation should then be forwarded to the district office." I mean, I just think that something like this, if it's going to really be, if it's important, should have administrative oversight, so that all of a sudden, it doesn't get out of control.
And that is the intent?
And not only that, out of control, I mean, does it, does this make sense as far as the district mission and goals? Does this all fit into that, rather than all of a sudden, you have some people that are just freelancing, and they think they're independent contractors? That's what I'm saying. And like you said, Mike, I would hate to be an administrator that, "Hey, I'm expected to do all this, but I don't have oversight, and I don't have a full understanding of what's going on." I just think that's good administration.
And then I think that the last point would be that, you know, just say, second grade, for example, a second grade classroom gets all new whatever, telescope, whatever it is, but then it's not unified for all the other second grade classrooms, because this was funded, and now the other second grade classrooms don't have it. So I think we run into all that, and really what I'm just trying to avoid is hearing teachers have to buy supplies and pay for things out of their own pocket. I think we're in a place where they don't have to do that, not that they don't do that or won't. You know, I don't have to buy fancy black folders, but I do, because I want to, but I think there's some loss there, because when I look at these supply lists that the parents of kindergarten have to purchase, I wonder, what is it that the kindergarten teachers have to go out and purchase? Do you see what I'm saying? And we're seeing, and this is not, this is in the paper all the time, letters to the editor all the time, about how teachers have to, and they may have, it used to be like that, but I don't know that they have to now, and if they do, then this is an issue that we should probably address, not through crowdsourcing.
I can tell you that I saw, again on social media, a teacher at the high school painting their classroom this past week. Had her husband in doing it, who's a friend of mine, who put the picture up, and he calls paint wall gravy, which is another story, but he's painting the classroom, and one of the comments was, "Didn't the school pay for that?" Because, you know, "Don't like the gray walls, I want purple walls," but did the school pay for that? And the answer is probably no, because there's already paint on the wall. But it seems like that that was a want, not a need, at least in my analysis of it. It doesn't look nice, yes, is the teacher customizing the classroom the way they want, yes, but it's now becoming, the school must go in, the school must put a custom paint color up. Where's the line?
Right.
So...
So is that all helpful for you?
Sure. So, I actually noticed that the tech part of this form needs to be revised, so we will be doing that, this is old already, and it's helpful, I think, actually, it's very helpful from the standpoint that we were going to have a conversation about the crowdsourcing tracking at our ATM on July 24th, so we can talk a little bit more about what the parameters are for approving crowdsourcing before they even come through the district, and I have some guidelines, I believe, as well.
And I think, again, that there isn't anybody up here who wants to short a classroom. Nobody here is saying, "Gosh, we're going to be super control freaks about it either," but we want to make sure that there's a policy, a procedure, and proper tracking on what we are going to place.
And a unified message from all of our schools.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cohen?
I have a question. Yeah, I see the need to bring...
Use the mic.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm new to this. Wow. All right, anyway, my question is this. So I see the need to bring in different things and bring things into classroom. I'm a little concerned, though, about the technology we're bringing in. We're bringing laptops into the school that are being donated and given to the teachers. What are those laptops being used for? You know, we have a situation where you, the board, and the administrators are responsible for everything that child learns in the school, and if anything is being taught to the kids that hasn't been passed through you, then we bypass the whole situation. So my thought process is, what are we doing with the laptops? What kind of programs are being put on them that aren't being reviewed by you, and so forth? And really, in a situation where we've seen that the best schools in the nation don't rely on technology to begin with, what are we doing with all these laptops that are coming in? Just my question.
Is that rhetorical, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
I can't specifically answer that question, as far as that example that Mr. Madison gave.
Do I need to go up there, because I could answer that for you, at least at Starline again? At Starline, I do have teachers that went on Donors Choose and got Chromebooks. We actually had to use our Chromebooks for our Arizona Merit this year, because we have 641 students, and we had our main lab, we had an upstairs lab, and we had a lab in the art room to rotate all those kids through and finish it within four week time period. We also have teachers using Ten Mark's in fourth grade on the Chromebooks in the classroom as a station. These are district-approved programs, because we had a person that put a list together, Michelle Burke. And I know in the classroom, in sixth grade, our Chromebooks were used for Google Docs, and so the kids were writing papers and using Google Docs, which is also district-approved. So there was quite a few uses with those laptops, and without them, we have 641 kids, so to process them all through the computer lab is impossible. So they're very, very necessary in the classroom to use technology.
I actually have some friends that teach down in the Phoenix metropolitan area, who do AZ Merit, and for instance, Chandler Unified uses their computer labs exclusively for their AZ Merit testing.
And we do too, for that entire month, but to process every kid through that lab when you have lunch periods, and there are special times, they're not using the lab for specials, but they're at specials like PE or art, making that schedule is, and you know that, you were the principal there for years, but it's nightmarish when you have that many kids processing through it, and now they've cut us a week. We used to have five weeks to do AZ Merit, now we only have four weeks, and then all the makeup. So we utilize all those rooms during that entire time, and our Chromebooks that the teachers have gotten through Donors Choose were used, and you had mentioned no budget for the Title I schools, but I have teachers that out order carpets for their classroom and kinder, which to me is really critical for management, because those kids have little spots they sit on, and there's 28 kindergartners. If they're sitting on a little square, it's a lot easier than find your spot that's nebulous. And I had a teacher buy that through Donors Choose, so, you know, I think it's important that as a principal and the superintendent, we approved spot through that, but I agree, very little of it, from my understanding, is being purchased through community donations. The Chromebooks, actually, Nikki Todd put it up, and the very next day, it was a business. I don't remember Google, you know, who it was, but purchased those Chromebooks within, like, one day. So just, I don't want to see us, at least at the site I'm at, micromanage that, because I have very little funding to none, and the teachers get things for their classroom that are pretty critical for, they'll research online and look at flexible seating, and then they have, we have no funding to purchase flexible seating for kindergarten. So, just my two cents.
So that opens up a whole nother can. We are crowdsourcing for Chromebooks for AZ Merit. That seems really outrageous.
That wasn't the purpose of the crowdsourcing for the book, when they ended up being used.
Yes.
Actually, that, to clarify that, each of our sites this year, and our tech department worked really hard on identifying a solution so that we could utilize them because of the reduction in the testing time. And I think some of the other districts also have different lab setups than we do, and maybe have more labs or more computers, but because of the fact that the testing was dependent on technology, and we needed to get everybody done in that four weeks, we did do, used that solution at our two larger schools, Jamaica and Starline.
And I'm not saying anything about what you did, what I'm saying is...
It's not the original expensive.
I understand that.
It just was supporting it when it occurred.
I understand that, but it's the first that I'm hearing of it, and I've been so against AZ Merit, and so concerned with the technology, so now, just hearing that for the first time, it's like, this kind of highlights about the state and the testing and the, so anyways.
I'm kind of wondering why we, as we have replaced computers throughout the district, didn't kind of find the best of the best and repurpose them into temporary testing labs that we could have set up.
They often use them in the classroom, so that they do, because they do have the AR system for the elementary that they do to their test, and I know from experience in a classroom for special education, very often, like I said, they aren't repurposing, and they are putting, kids are getting new computers, but they're not new, they're utilizing the best. When we get a new lab, they go through those labs, and they get them to different classes.
But understanding that crunch in that testing regime, I'm just wondering why we, if we have these big schools where we have over 600 children that run through a testing regime, why we haven't looked at a temporary expansion of a lab, or a secondary lab in a different area?
Well, we have looked at a couple options, and of course, the availability, having the portable labs as well, but again, we have had limited DAA to be able to purchase capital.
Right.
So we did replace some labs this year, we were able to do that. Again, this is where some of our title schools have a little bit of an advantage, they can purchase technology, and I know, for example, Mr. Sanders has repurposed, got a new lab, and then created another whole lab of the older computers that can be used just basically for testing and for some basic things, and so that is happening to a degree. But we do have, you know, a kind of an imbalance in the numbers of students, and within a certain time window, it is difficult on a tech-based assessment to get everybody through.
Any further discussion in 6.9? I'm assuming that you'll have a revision coming forward.
Okay. Certainly a revision in this format.
Yes.
Is there some additional language that you would like in the policy?
I haven't heard additional language, but I think we need to flip at the form.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
Then we'll close the discussion and move on. 6.10, discussion of possible approval for a board member, Nicole Cohen, to debate state superintendent candidates.
And while I want to do that, we had a motion and a second.
To open discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was simply to open discussion.
It was? Oh, okay. Okay.
And possible further action to the man.
Okay, I guess I missed that. Okay. Sorry, didn't need to interrupt you.
Mrs. Cohen, that one should be 6.1?
Yes, yes. So really, this was just a courtesy, I've been following the candidates, and I was speaking with Mr. File, and I asked him about challenging the candidates in a public forum, and he said that that could be, you know, construed by public, people of the public, that you were speaking on behalf of your board. I also spoke with Ms. Douglas, and she said you were able to use your voice however you wished to, so this was really, I asked Mrs. Asier to put this on, just so that the board knew that I did in fact intend on speaking publicly with all the candidates that are coming through, because I'm just tired of them coming in and lying to our community, especially the Republican candidates that are running, I hate to say that out loud, but, so anyways, this was me wanting to let the board know that I intend on being at all their meet and greets, and I would in fact like to publicly challenge them with my board's blessing, but that was not required or necessary. Again, it was a courtesy, because I didn't want the district being the phone, you know, people calling the district saying, "What is she saying to these people?" So, I don't know if I've made myself clear, but I've met with the first Republican that's come through town, it was not in a public forum, Mr. Madison happened to stop by, but the rest will be very public forums, so, again, this was my way of giving my board the heads up and the leadership, and then if you would like to give me your blessing to challenge these candidates, since they are going to be working closely with the governor and the State Board of Ed to make the rules that we all have to abide by, I would be happy to do that, but I intend to do it anyways. So...
Well, now, let's say it's not a meet and greet, which is rather informal.
Right.
But an announced debate of some kind.
Yes.
I'm sure you would, you would say, I do not necessarily represent the school board or any individual school board members, I mean, you would give us disclaimer.
I absolutely will say that, absolutely will say that.
And so, I think it's, I think it's good that you are doing this, and I commend you for doing that.
If I may say, this particular year, I have learned how important it is, just based on the A through F system and the state board's role in coming up with and approving the areas that our schools are being evaluated on. And I think from, from the perspective of a seated school board member who understands what this does to our schools and our community, to have the ability to ask questions that may get to, the real intent of candidates would be helpful. may get to the real intent of candidates would be helpful for us.
Now, you, but you can do that on your own.
I can, yes, I can. I absolutely can with a disclaimer, just like Kathy said, that I'm not speaking on anybody's behalf.
Because all of a sudden, you know, I get, you know, when I saw this, the first thing is, and then, if you, if we were to approve this, it would be, you know, sort of the backing of the board. And as a citizen, you can go there and you can let them know that you're a board member.
Absolutely.
And you, that you're concerned about that stuff. But I think it would be more appropriate as a citizen going there and handling that way, other than having, from what I see here, that the board says, "Hey, we approve of that, we approve of that." You know what I mean?
I do. And the only reason, again, maybe I didn't make it clear...
I appreciate you doing this, so, telling us what you're gonna do.
But after speaking with Mike File, it became, he made it clear that I have the authority to speak on my own behalf as a school board member. But it will create some discomfort, if you will, for people in the community who might not understand what's taking place. And so, his suggestion was, you might want to bring it to your board, because then there is no issue. But that's fine, I'm, either way...
After what Pat said, it makes me think that really, having a motion and passing, passing it almost creates more of a problem. I mean, if you have my backing, I think you've got Pat's. I don't, we don't even need his vote. So, it's, it's okay. I mean, maybe we don't need to, maybe somebody should withdraw the motion.
There's no motion.
Oh, if you have it, then we should, oh, okay.
I appreciate the heads-up. And I have, I have said privately and publicly that everybody is entitled, as a citizen of this country, to have an opinion and to express it in a manner which they feel best suits them. And I would agree with you that in politics, that there's not always an open-ended thought process of letting everybody really know what someone's true agenda is. And so, without a motion, feel free, let them have it. Thank you. Okay. Item six point one one is for vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds. Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve the student activity funds for grades K through 12 for the month of May. And just a note there that vouchers for June and July will be presented for approval in August because of the short, having this meeting so close to the beginning of the month.
All right. I will entertain a motion on six point one one.
I make a motion we approve six point one one as presented.
Second. Any discussion on six point one one? Questions? Carrie?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rudy?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item number seven are the informational items. Superintendent Asier.
We do have an informational update from Educational Services and also from our Personnel and Technology, which provides a little bit of update as of July 3rd, where we were in the hiring. I would like to point out on the gifts and donations, because we were talking, we had such a long discussion about donations. We did have a donation of 40 cases of copy paper, which is wonderful, thank you. I know Mr. Mastin had a little bit of a hand in that from ANA Electronics. And as a result of our board action to add in the art, music, and PE at the elementaries, the American Heart Association contacted us. They had some additional playground balls and other things from their most recent fundraiser, so they donated those for our elementary PE. And then, our Realtors Association decided to pursue the five-gallon buckets so that every elementary school could have a bucket drum band. I'm sure they're going to be thrilled about that. So, we do have 175 buckets that were donated from Lowe's, and those have been distributed as well. Also, we had mentioned at the last meeting that the London Bridge Rotary provided an amount for each of the principals at their meeting, and so that is listed on this donation. Again, I know we talk about the amounts, the month total for last month was over $22,000 in value of what was donated. And frankly, we really do not have that kind of discretionary funding to purchase these things. So, it's very helpful. I was going to mention our five-star rating, so congratulations to Little Night's Preschool. I also wanted to mention that we do have a board meeting next week on Tuesday, July 17th, where we'll be talking about our textbooks and materials. There will be two items on that agenda so far. Coming up between our July 17th meeting and the next meeting official in August, we have our new teachers that'll be starting on July 23rd. The orientation is the week of the 23rd to 27th, and the board is invited to join them for lunch on the 24th. This will be at the high school. Our regular staff returns July 30th. That's only three weeks away, but we're back. They'll be back that week through August 2nd. And August 1st is our big district welcome back event, where we will be having Rachel's challenge kickoff, so I'm very excited about that. And between now, again, and our next regular board meeting, we start school on August 6th. So, it's happening very quickly.
Thank you. Item eight is our second call of the public. Carrie?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And item nine is communication.
John?
We have a technology update on here. Well, it's just written.
Oh, okay.
It's written, yeah.
Okay.
And on item nine, as Superintendent Asier indicated, we will have a meeting on 17th to go over our textbooks. And any board suggestions for future items? Got any questions, Karen? With that, I will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, could you leave me alone? Could we introduce our new assistant principal for Lake Havasu High School?
I suppose we should do that.
Ms. Shannon Williams is here. If you would stand up, please. And for those of you who don't know, Shannon was a part of the personnel report. Congratulations.
That's what happens when it's on the calendar. Congratulations, Shannon.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain the motion.
It's also nice to have our newest director at our first official meeting as well.
I think I lost control about half an hour. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second. Okay. Carrie?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rudy?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Thank you.